I'm going to call the special meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, September 21st at 7:01 PM in the Aldemantic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. Which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website.
They started, alright, no, they started.
Prayer will be offered by Deputy Clerk Allison Waite and Alderman Jettie will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Oh mighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Kelly. Alderman Dowd.
President.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am attending via Zoom. I'm in the room by myself, and the reason I'm not attending is I'm staying safer at home.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here.
Alderman Tenza.
I apologize, I appear via Zoom, I can hear everybody, and I am staying home out of an abundance of caution, thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Madam President.
We're not getting any audio going through our system.
Alderman Jettie.
That's gonna be on your end, because it's not muted.
We're having audio problems, Allison.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
You hear it loud and clear at home.
Alderwoman Lou. Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm here.
Alderman Laws.
I'm here on Zoom, I'm at home.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here via Zoom because of medical issues and I am alone.
Alderman Harry Gathroy.
That's it.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
I am here.
Alright, you have eight in attendance and four via Zoom.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. So, just announced, and we're gonna stop right back up again.
We are having technical difficulties, we'll be back in a minute.
Um, testing, one, two, three, okay.
Okay.
Madam President, we're all set.
Okay, um, thank you. This evening, we have a discussion with the, um, with the folks from the New Hampshire Retirement System, and I'm going to introduce Marty Carlin and Jan Reed from, was that your last name?
Goodwin.
Goodwin, I'm sorry, I didn't hear Goodwin, it's the mask. Jan Goodwin, I hear from the New Hampshire Retirement System. Are we still good?
Yep, yeah, we're still good.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry for all the technical difficulties for our guests. I'm gonna turn this over to you, Mr. Carlin.
Thank you, I, I, thank you for the technical difficulties, I'm having some of my own, trying to load a PowerPoint on this laptop, I think our IT department has so much to heart, and it's almost impossible to open a file on here. So I did bring hard copies to go through, it's a little old school, but I'll distribute those, because I don't think this is gonna open. And while I'm doing that, this is our Executive Director, Jan Goodwin, and she can have some opening remarks before we get to the presentation.
We are seeing...
Okay, yeah, but it's just not opening, unfortunately.
It's everything else in the room.
That's like a preview, because it's frozen now.
Might be frozen.
I have a PDF version, too.
So thank you very much, members of the council, for inviting us to come and talk to you about the retiree system. We've got a talk that we've prepared for you, that's about the past, present, and future of NHRS. Well, that will explain to you why the contribution rates are what they are now, and what we're thinking they'll be in the future. So, if you'd like, we can start without the electronic slide show, and we can just tell you when to turn the page, if you'd like.
Excuse me, with the mask, you have to pull the microphone very close.
Okay, thank you very much for that suggestion.
Again, apologies, it's, it apparently is on this laptop, it won't allow me to open the file, so...
Mike, did you get one?
I'm gonna close out.
No.
And, uh, Steve, can, Steve, can you grab me two?
May I get one?
Yes, I got it. All right, this is the hard copy of the presentation, right?
Yes. Thank you, I need one for the record.
Again, apologies, would you prefer us to stand when we're presenting, or?
No, you're fine seated, that's fine.
I, I'm, just for the record, my name is Marty Carlin, and I'm the Director of Communications and Legislative Affairs at the Retirement System. I've been there about 11 years, and I'm gonna do the first half of the presentation, which deals with some of the issues that occurred in the past, and how they brought us to where we are now. And then Jan is gonna take the presentation home with a look at some current numbers and where we're headed. I'll be glad to take questions from the panel throughout, if, at the will of the Chair, you know, for, you know, during, or we can take them at the end, whichever you all prefer, whatever your style is. So, you know, really, you know, especially with the New Hampshire Retirement System and the time scales it works on, you need to sort of understand the past and some decisions that were made back then, to see, get a better picture of where we are now, and, you know, how we got there, and what we've, what's been done about it by both the Retirement System, the Legislature, and everyone else. So, I'll go to Slide 2, which is just the beginning. NHRS's identity has been around since 1967. There were separate retirement plans for the four member groups that were independently governed by different boards, and the Legislature combined and consolidated those plans into NHRS back in 67. As it is now, when the plan was set up, there are two membership categories, Group 1, which is Employees and Teachers, and Group 2, which is Police and Fire. And our plan is for full-time employees only. At the time the plan was set up, the state contributed 40% of the employer contributions for teachers only. That was a holdover from the predecessor teacher plan that the state had, at least since the early 50s, as far back as I could confirm, had always contributed 40% of the employer costs towards teachers. So, in 1977, on Slide 3, that employer subsidy was modified and expanded. The state reduced the teacher contribution from 40% to 35%, but at the same time, created a 35% contribution subsidy for police officers and firefighters, for the cost that the communities contribute to the retirement system for those positions. I don't, I believe, in 1974, there were improvements to the Group 2 Police and Fire Plan, and the bills were coming due on that with the 77 rates, and I think that was one of the reasons that spurred the Legislature to take this action. That subsidy had been in place for many years, until it was reduced in 2009, and then eventually eliminated a couple of years later. So, moving to Slide 4, 1983. We call this one Heads I Win, Tails You Lose, and the issue here in the decision was that it was a relatively young plan, there were more, far more active members than retirees than, and cost of living adjustments were being paid for either through the general fund or through some other employer assessment formula, but, you know, in the long-term, policymakers looked at that and said, you know, as, as the retiree population grows, you know, we need to have a better, more stable source of funding for COLAs, cost-of-living adjustments than the general fund. So they created what was called the Special Account at the time, and this was funded by, and it's in quotes, excess earnings. And this was essentially when our investment return exceeded a certain point, any funds over and above that, that return were segregated in the Special Account to pay other COLA or post-employment benefits. So it was, seemed like a good idea when you were exceeding your assumed rate of return as a model, but it did not prove to be the case over the long term, and that was the funding, particularly for the medical subsidy benefit, was determined to be an IRS issue with the Special Account in the early, mid-2000s, and it was repealed in 2011. So, this is one of the first steps to creating a structural unfunded liability with the retirement system. And it plays into some decisions in the 90s, and then some economic impacts in the 2000s, is one of the, sort of the legs of how we got to where we are liability-wise. 1984, a constitutional amendment was passed in New Hampshire by referendum, Article 36A, and that did three things essentially. It established that pension funds in the trust are for the exclusive benefit of NHRS members, not to be diverted for any other purpose. It required the trustees to set actuarially sound employer contribution rates, so they, you know, didn't really have any leeway on what it should be, the actuary crunches the numbers, and, you know, they go with that. And then it also required employers to pay those rates in full each fiscal year. Now, this distinguishes NHRS from several states around the country that you might have heard about, if you follow pension issues where funding levels are, and liabilities are much graver than in New Hampshire, such as Illinois, New Jersey, Kentucky. And in those jurisdictions, there is no constitutional provision, so the Legislature grants as much money as it feels like it can afford that year. So they're not necessarily fully funding their pension obligations as they recruit, and that, that's a hole that you just keep digging, and it gets harder and harder to get out. We had 36A in New Hampshire, and, and I think there was a Constitutional Convention a few years earlier, and this was one of the proposals that came out of that. There were some unsuccessful attempts by governors in the 70s and 80s to borrow against the trust fund for other state priorities, or defer payments of their, the state's pension obligation. So, that's where 36A came from the following year, and this was sort of wending parallel tracks through the courts. There was a Supreme Court case, Sanunu v. NHRS, and that's obviously Sanunu v. Elder. And the issue there was whether the Executive Council would, could approve NHRS contracts for vendors and investments and such, and the court found that we are not an executive branch agency, and we're operating for the exclusive benefit of the members. So that sort of got us farther removed from the hurly-burly of state government and the executive branch.
One question, Madam President, if I may.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, Mr. Collins, are you sharing the screen? Did you get the program working?
It's still frozen, so...
Okay, because I took, I just, I received some texts. Since it's still frozen, I took it down to go back on. Do you want to back up where it's still frozen?
Probably not, it's just, you know, it's just my file is open here, and I'm, you know, I suspect...
Okay, that's why I took it down, okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Even opening one of my own files has become problematic. We haven't been out on the road, obviously, very much in the past year and a half either. Good, good break for a question, because the next slide, 1991, digging the hole, this is a really significant slide, and I'm probably gonna talk more about it than I need to, but this, this is sort of an extremely important issue that, that kind of led us down the path we were. So, a little bit further, further back, in the late 80s, we had a couple of very strong investment years, in excess of 25% in back-to-back years, and there was some stomach in the Legislature in 88, 89, to increase or improve benefits for our membership in Group 1 and Group 2, including creating a medical subsidy benefit that was initially only for Group 2. And what happened is, the way our rates are cycled, the state's on a two-year budget cycle, and that follows our rate cycle, so the 1989 valuation is what would ultimately lead to the 1992, 93 fiscal year rates. So, in the interim between 1989 and 91, you know, we had a recession across the country. New Hampshire was hit particularly hard, and I recognize several of you from, from when I lived in Nashville, when you were around back then, and, you know, banks were closing left and right on Main Street, condos were underwater, and there were, there were a lot of pressures on both the state and the local governments. I think Nashville was even also impacted by a revaluation that sort of shifted the tax burden, because the commercial property had dropped so much. So, so then, you know, as, as that was coming, the rates for 92, 93 were gonna be on a percentage increase basis significantly higher than they were in prior years. I mean, they were still much lower than they are in absolute percentages now, you know, but even that increase was, was difficult for policymakers to, to want to undertake in the recession. So, there was legislation adopted in 1991 that did a few things. It changed the actuarial method, the way the actuaries crunched the numbers to develop the rates, to a, to a open group aggregate. It was a, it was an actuarial methodology that was allowed at the time, and it stretched liabilities out over a much farther period, so it lowered, you know, the rates in the short term, but it was sort of designed where you almost never catch up. And they also, by legislation, set our assumed rate of return at an extremely high level, and this was gonna be sort of a temporary stopgap solution to get the 92, 93 rates recertified. So, you know, this is, this is one where you could say, how did, how could this happen? I think, you know, people were making, trying to make, you know, reasonable decisions based on the information they had, and you can point fingers in every direction to say who, who should have spoken up, including our board, membership, employers, you know, but, you know, it happened. And, and it was not a temporary solution, the mandate on the assumed rate of return was repealed the following year, but that open group aggregate stayed as the method for calculating rates through 2009, the 2009 rates. So that was essentially like, you know, drilling a hole in the bottom of your boat and forgetting about it for 18 years, and then, you know, when your ankles get wet, you wonder what happened. So, you know, and those changes were, in the early years, sort of papered over by the fact that we did have a very strong 1990s, like anyone in the markets, we had, I think, eight years out of nine where it was a 10 to 20% return. So, the Special Account was getting filled, we were still hitting our recent assumptions, and we had this, I guess the technical term would be funky math for calculating our rates, and, and things were swimming along until the early 2000s, when we had the dot-com bubble and the recession after 9/11. And, you know, that got the Legislature thinking that, you know, maybe this wasn't the right way to do it, and, you know, constituent groups, and ultimately in 2007, some legislation was adopted, replaced the open group aggregate with entry-age normal, which is right now the only standard way to calculate rates allowed under GASB and actuarial standards, and created the 30-year amortization of the unfunded liability, which at the time was 2.4 billion. And the liability was hidden, the number looked much lower when you were using the open group aggregate method, so it, you know, was a bit of a, you know, a shock. The Special Account funding to that was cut off until certain triggers were met, so no more money was flowing from investment income into the Special Account. And they also created a commission in HB 876 to make additional recommendations of reform of the retirement system. It was essentially what were referred to as the First Decennial Commission. So, that, that...
Alderman Jettie, do you have a question?
Yes, you, you mentioned GASB, what is GASB?
A governmental accounting standards board, it's, it's not a mandate, but to get a clean audit opinion, you need to adhere to the GASB standards for different things. Thank you. You're welcome. So, in 2008, additional legislation followed, the 2007 changing the methodology and closing the loop, setting a closed period on the debt, were sort of foundational issues that shored up, you know, patch those holes in the floor, now you're still up, up to your ankles and water, but, you know, there's no more water coming in. In 2008, the Legislature made additional changes, they created an independent investment committee to manage the plan's investments, transferred money from the Special Account into the, to the body of the trust fund to mitigate some, some of the employer costs at the time, froze the medical subsidy benefit, you know, which is essentially very closed now, but the increases in it were frozen, and revised the definition of earnable compensation. So what employees and other members earn, not all the pay types were allowed, they previously had been. There was a lawsuit challenging some of these decisions, that went on for several years, and we'll kind of close the book on the lawsuits on a, on a future slide. So, you know, that was more cleanup, you know, 2007, 8 combined, you know, we're sort of dealing with some structural issues. In 2009, obviously, 2008, 9, Great Recession, you know, dire days for all, and the state was looking to manage its funding as well. So it, that employer subsidy I talked about earlier, that had been around since the late 70s, was lowered by legislation to 30% in fiscal 10 and 25% in fiscal 11. It was slated to bounce back to 35% in fiscal 12, but in 2011, that was, it was repealed entirely instead. So, you know, that also drew a lawsuit from school districts and counties and employers that was, was decided, I think, in 2014. And then 2011, so we talked about structural things, we talked about state funding for employers. In 2011, 12, the Legislature came in and sort of looked toward the benefit side, towards the member side, as to what to cut and how to manage that. So, through, what, it ultimately became part of House Bill 2, which is the Budget Trailer Bill, but there was by far the most significant changes to the pension system, and since it was established, and a, and a set of changes, member contributions were increased as a percent of pay, several benefit provisions were reduced for non-vested active members and for future hires, some of the pension formulas themselves were changed, so they would generate a lower result for, you know, non-vested and future generations. Changed the composition of our Board of Trustees to bring more employers on, you know, a huge slate of changes. Essentially, at that point, you know, we had two benefit plans, Group 1 and Group 2, and what this did was created three tiers of benefits within each group, so there was, you know, a lot of changes there. Again, this, 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 these provisions drew two lawsuits against the state, one specifically on the increase to member contributions, and one basically on everything else in it. And in, over a period of decisions between 2012 and 2016, the Supreme Court decided in favor of the state in all of these cases. They, the City of Concord was the lead plaintiff in the employer subsidy case, you know, they said that was not an unfunded mandate. In all of the benefit cases that were brought by various labor groups, you know, and other interested parties, they claimed the, the found, the court found that those were not an unconstitutional breach of contract, and they introduced into New Hampshire the legal concept of the unmistakability doctrine, which has been applied in other states, that if the Legislature does not have an unmistakable intent in passing legislation, it does not represent a contract and can be changed by future legislative bodies. So, everything that, you know, passed between 2007 and 11, all stood up in court. So, brought us to 2017, and, you know, a lot of the heavy lifting was done, but the, you know, the smoke had not yet cleared, and the, the commission to look at the long-term viability of the retirement system, which was created in 2007, was gonna convene every 10 years. So we had a Decennial Commission in 2017 that met for a period of three or four months in the fall of 17, to look at the plan. Folks from all ends of the political spectrum, and the members, employers, retirees, legislators, local representatives, I think it was about a 21-member commission, looked at that, and made, they made several suggestions. They thought that overall, the funding progress was moving in the right direction, but they suggested revisions to working after retirement for NHRS retirees with participating employers. They adopted layered amortization, you know, which is sort of a, sort of a difficult concept for a non-actuary like myself to, to convey, but basically, it's a mechanism to reduce a lot of volatility with future liabilities by spreading them out over 20-year periods going forward. And we'll talk a little bit more about that on one of the funding slides. They recommended a one-time payment to retirees in lieu of a cost-of-living adjustment because of cost, made, made several other proposals that were ultimately adopted by the Legislature, some as-is, some with, you know, legislation, legislative negotiation, modifying them a little bit. And the commission actually had funding from the state, and they used some of that money to hire the Center for Retirement Research at Boston College to do sort of an independent third-party review of NHRS and the changes that the Legislature has made over the past 10 years. And if you're not familiar, you know, they're not in the headlines that much, but they are very well-regarded nationally as a nonpartisan retirement research center, both in public and private sector, our retirement issues, they, they do a lot of work, you'll hear them on, you know, the nightly Business Review and things like that, quite a bit representatives from there. And they, they looked at NHRS and, and found that in 2017, we used among the more conservative assumptions for mortality and rate of return compared to other state plans, which, which they graded as a good thing. They found that our investment returns over the, the trailing 10, preceding 10 years exceeded most other plans, we were above average with returns. And sort of a head-scratcher for everybody in the room, and ourselves included, because we hadn't crunched those numbers, was that our total government costs for NHRS at the time were lower than the national average, 15% of government spending to 18% nationally, which, you know, was an eye-opener. And they also were charged with looking at why has the unfunded liability grown since 2007. Again, it was 2.4 billion then, it was 5 billion as of 2017, and what they found were three main drivers to that. We had the Great Recession, and had a, had a significant loss in fiscal 9, 18%. So that, and that was, you know, we're digging out from under that for the, for the last, next 10 years, reductions to our assumed rate of return over that period, and finally, a level percent amortization. This, this plays into how the pension debt is being funded down through employer contributions, and level percent is set up so that the, we're not quite paying off the principal in the early years like a mortgage, you're almost just making the interest payments or even less than that, so the liability sort of grows as an intent, is an intended consequence of the plan. We've just kind of crossed over into not negative amortization in this past year. So that's, that's their take on where we were at, you know, which was fairly detailed. That report and the Decennial Commission's report are both available on the state website and on ours, if anybody's interested, I could follow up with a, a link to it, to Linda. And that kind of brings us to the present, so I'll give you a break from my voice and let Jan take over, but at the break, if anybody has any questions about anything, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Anyone have any questions at this point? Say none?
Thank you. So we're on Slide 15 now, and fortunately, the past does not always repeat itself. Here are some of our key actuarial metrics and what they mean. NHRS's assets continue to grow, and as of June 30th of this year, they're now at $11.3 billion. Although our unfunded actuarial accrued liability, the UAAAL, that's the difference between the actuarial value of assets and the benefits our members have earned, continues to grow, that growth is largely attributable to the interest accrual on the unfunded liability each year, and the decreases in the assumed rate of return for the investment portfolio. As Marty mentioned earlier, the 30-year amortization of the unfunded liability began in fiscal year 2010. Just as with the 30-year mortgage on your home, the payments on, in the initial years primarily go to interest, and like the amortization schedule for your home's mortgage, we have now reached the tipping point, after which the employer contributions will be increasingly allocated to the principal on the unfunded liability. Our funded ratio, the ratio of our actuarial value of assets to the pension benefits our members have earned, is 61% as of last June. It's important to consider the funded ratio in the context of what is expected for the retirement system. It's possible to have two retirement systems with a 61% funded ratio, and one of the plans may be significantly more sound than the other. In NHRS's situation, we have a plan to get to 100% funding, thanks to our, thanks to the Board's commitment, and statutory and constitutional provisions that have put us on the path to 100% funding in about another 18 years. We have about 48,500 members as of last June. This number has remained fairly constant since 2011. In contrast, the number of our retirees and beneficiary recipients continues to grow, and was 39,600 as of last June. and was thirty-nine thousand six hundred as of last June. In two thousand and ten, there were only twenty-seven thousand one hundred retirees and beneficiary recipients. The reason why NHRS exists is to pay pension benefits. This past fiscal year, we paid over eight hundred and sixty million dollars in pension benefits and medical subsidies to our retirees and beneficiaries. According to the National Institute on Retirement Security, these benefits helped drive the New Hampshire economy. According to their two thousand and twenty-one Pensionomics Report, the net benefits supported eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five jobs that paid four hundred and ninety-three million dollars in wages and salaries. As you can see, eighty percent of our retirees stay right here in New Hampshire. Slide sixteen. The number of actives is remaining constant while the number of retirees and beneficiary recipients is steadily growing. While the ratio of active members to benefit recipients is getting closer to a one to one ratio, that does not mean that the long term viability of NHRS is threatened. There is a sound funding plan in place, as Marty mentioned earlier. Slide seventeen. The value of the NHRS investment portfolio continues to grow. Needless to say, it is affected by the downturns in the financial markets. However, it has improved significantly since the fiscal year two thousand and twenty downturn, which was largely caused by the pandemic. Next slide, slide eighteen. This slide shows how NHRS's funded ratio has increased overall since two thousand and ten and as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, is sixty-one percent. In contrast, the average funded ratio for U.S. public pension plans has decreased over the same timeframe. And so it, NHRS's funded ratio is the lower of the two lines and the the average national plan is shown on the upper line. As the three triangles indicate, over the same time, NHRS has reduced its assumed rate of return on its investments from eight point five percent in two thousand and eleven to six point seven five percent in two, in two thousand and twenty. NHRS has gone from having one of the highest assumed rates of return in the nineteen nineties to one of the most conservative assumed rates of return today. The assumed rate of return reflects the expected earnings on the different parts of our investment portfolio. These returns and the underlying inflation assumptions may change over time. Slide nineteen. Fiscal year investment returns reflect the financial market volatility of those time periods. Fortunately, the downturns caused by the dot com bust, the Great Financial Recession, and today's pandemic have all been followed by recoveries that often exceed the downturns. For the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, our net investment return is twenty-six point eight percent, which is one point four percent over our benchmark. This chart illustrates why actuaries use their five year smoothing convention for asset valuation and calculating the actuarial.
I'm sorry, what now where could you, I lost where you get this twenty-six percent on one of those slides?
I'm sorry, we did did not update this slide nineteen to reflect that.
Okay.
The two thousand and twenty-one.
Sorry.
No worries. Without this five year smoothing, the employer contribution rates would experience significant swings every two years. Slide twenty. The employer contribution rate for NHRS has three separate components: normal cost, unfunded liability amortization, and the medical subsidy. Let's look at these one at a time. The normal cost is the percent of payroll that is necessary to pay the current cost of the pension benefits as they accrue for our members. As you can see in the text below the chart, NHRS members pay a substantial proportion of the total normal cost of their pension benefits. The largest part of the employer contribution rate is the pay down of the unfunded liability over time. As Marty mentioned earlier, the employer contribution rate has to be sufficient to amortize the unfunded liability over the remainder of the thirty year closed amortization period. This, combined with changes in the actuarial assumptions, can make it can make for significant increases in employer contributions every two years, as you well know, when the NHRS Board sets the employer contribution rates to fulfill its fiduciary, statutory, and constitutional duties. The medical subsidy is the smallest part of the employer contribution rate for a couple of reasons. First, those eligible for the subsidy are essentially a closed pool of slightly less than ten thousand individuals, either currently receiving the subsidy or eligible to receive it upon retirement. And second, the funding of the subsidy is on a pay as you go or solvency basis, similar to Social Security, so there is no amortization goal of reaching one hundred percent funding as there is with the pension benefit. Slide twenty-one. So how do NHRS's practices line up with best practices for well funded public pension plans? In two thousand and eleven, the National Institute on Retirement Security examined several well funded public pension plans to identify what elements they all had in common. And as you can see, these are the six different items, and I'll compare how NHRS stacks up against each one. Employer contributions that pay the full amount of the annual contribution, yes, and that maintains stability over time, not so much, because they do vary a great deal from one year to the next. Two, employee contributions help pay planned costs, and yes, they definitely do here in New Hampshire. Do the benefit improvements, are they actuarially valued before adoption and properly funded upon adoption? Yes, that's also true in New Hampshire. Cost of living adjustments are granted responsibly? Yes, that happens. Anti spiking measures are in place? Yes. And the economic actuarial assumptions can be reasonably expected to be achieved over the long term? Yes. Based on this, I would give NHRS a five point five out of a possible score of six.
Brian, did you have questions?
Yes, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
You say cost of living adjustments have been granted responsibility responsibly. When was the last one? And when was the last one prior to that? So that the public knows what the definition of responsibility is with this.
The, the last one was granted in two thousand and nineteen and took effect in two thousand and twenty. And as to the one before that, I'm going to have to defer to Marty on that.
Two thousand and ten.
So did, so it was about nine years difference between approximately with that. Okay. And can you also define what is anti spiking measures?
Yes. Anti spiking is when someone, a member deliberately tries to increase their salary so they will have a higher pension. So we have, the way we do that is the, the changes that were made in two thousand and eleven, the, and the, the, the excess of compensation over base is considered when determining what someone's pension benefit is. So that.
All right, well, if I may follow up, you know, not to get into any debate, but I always felt that this kind of hurts the pension system. Because if you take in the example of a police officer who is working overtime at a construction site, when he used to get paid, you know, in the back, part of that overtime from that detail was cut out into the pension system. So by these anti spiking measures, have they crippled the pension system by allowing what the police officer in my example, by contributing to the pension system? I wonder how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that could have could have been lost here?
I can jump in. I, I, I think with with the issue of spiking, and it is a very fraught, you know, issue, you know, politically in some states, you know, it's more the timing of the payments. You know, if someone was working detail or overtime throughout their career, you know, that money's coming in on a, on a regular basis throughout, you know, a twenty or thirty year career, we've got, we're investing that money for decades. Whereas someone who only works and gets extra money in their final years, you know, and it's going to reduce their permanent lifetime benefit significantly, but we have that money hasn't been growing for them over that time. So e- even before the changes in two thousand and eleven, back in nineteen ninety, the legislature did put a cap on the members' last year of earnable compensation, and anything more than a hundred and fifty percent of the next highest year.
Right, correct.
Doesn't count against the pension. These folks get all the money that they earn, they just wouldn't put in pension contributions nor would the employer or any of these, you know, above the cap level. So, yeah, that, you know, so that it's more of a timing issue with the spiking than.
And and I thank you. I mean, the thing is, when does that member get that money back out of the system as first pension check or the one before he dies? I don't know. You know what I mean?
On average, what, what, you know, the, the folks who are involved with the numbers tell me that, you know, the first five to seven years for a typical member, you know, their benefit is their money coming back to them. And then, you know, for however long they live beyond that, it's, you know, it's money from the overall trust fund, funding their benefit. And if a member does pass away before all of their money is paid back to them, that their beneficiary is going to get it back one way or the other, either as a lump sum or if they chose a survivorship option to leave some of that benefit to a beneficiary, they get, they get the money back. You know, the IRS frowns on us keeping members' money. So we have to, sometimes we have to hunt down people in their seventies with a required minimum distribution and start paying the money even though they haven't come to us.
Okay. I thank you both because I think you, we both agree that if a person is paying some of their shift coverage or overtime pay into the pension system, it benefits the pension system. You know, than not doing it. So anti spiking, I, I have a little problem with that definition or what it's actually doing. I think it's taking money out of the system. Thank you.
Well, of course, we're trying not to shoot the messenger here because I know that.
I hope you understand that.
Most of the policies are set by the legislature and you carry out those mandates by and large. But just to get some basic facts, so you said that last year, the pension system paid out eight hundred and sixty million dollars in benefits. What did you take in from employers and employees? Do you know that?
Fiscal twenty was cash flow negative because we had a one point one percent investment return. So the trust fund was essentially flat. It went from like nine point one eight to nine point three four. So it, you know, was a slight loss. This past year, you know, we had a large investment return, so, you know, it's, you know, it's much more cash flow positive. So.
I see.
You know, of the, of the pension benefits, we, I did a little crunching just for the benefit of this body. I thought you might find it interesting. We have, you are our second largest employer, the City of Nashua, because Manchester City employees are in a separate plan. So, so you are number two to the state with about nineteen hundred active members as the last fiscal year. There are about seventeen hundred and fifty Nashua city and school retirees currently receiving a benefit or the beneficiary is receiving that benefit out of our nearly forty thousand folks. And the average Nashua pension benefit for somebody who retired from the city is twenty-eight thousand five hundred, which is a little bit larger than the overall average benefit statewide, which is twenty thousand eight forty-one. So the, you know, the twenty-eight five times, you know, about seventeen hundred and fifty people, that's about fifty million in pension benefits paid to Nashua retirees last year. And in terms of city residents, and this could be, you know, folks who work for Nashua and still live here, or folks who worked in Hollis or Hudson or wherever, you know, just folks in the Nashua zip codes, we paid out twenty-five point four million in fiscal twenty to folks living in the city limits.
So I think, Mr. Carlin, your predecessor, I just wanted to see if this, you still think this is correct. Your predecessor, I, I heard state a few times that eighty percent of the money being paid in by municipal employers such as us is to help with the unfunded liability as opposed to meet the obligations that you expect from the current employees. And that's still the case.
That is still the case. Unfortunately, this generation of elected officials is bearing the brunt of, you know, bad policy decisions thirty years ago. And honestly, I think if either one of us were in any of your seats, we would feel the same way you do.
I think some of us have been around that long.
Now, the, the, of course, the frustration here in part, and I'm sure you've heard this many times, comes from the fact that Nashua pays, I believe, our budget for fiscal twenty twenty-two is, which we just began, is twenty-nine million dollars, which really is, you know, nearly fifteen percent of the tax burden. So, you know, on a, on a person who's paying, say, six or seven thousand dollars, a thousand dollars of that is, you know, in property taxes, a thousand dollars of that is going to the, to the pension issue, which, you know, is difficult and painful and reduces the ability of the city to deliver basic services, schools and everything else. I mean, it's just drives property taxes so high. But let me, let me ask this kind of basic question. Why does it matter so much that we go to a hundred percent? And I pose the question with this context. You know, if GM has a, you know, a big pension system with a huge unfunded liability, I believe, if they go bankrupt, which could happen, the pensioners don't get paid. I mean, that's a problem, obviously. Now, the New Hampshire retirement system has eleven billion in its coffers, so to speak. But with the amount of money you have coming in and with some degree of investment return, it seems that you will always have enough to pay current benefits. And the situation I just suggested for GM is never likely going to happen. I mean, the state will never go bankrupt or never end its existence and therefore will never be in a situation where it cannot, even if we just stayed at sixty-one percent, will never be in a situation where it actually has to pay out everyone with nothing coming in. Because the only way that this system would ever end is if the state ended, which means the United States ended, which means that there is, no pension, pension assets are worth nothing. I, you know, stock market, if the country ends, none of this stuff is worth anything. So aren't we sort of, you, you know, taking all this pain and all the money that we're putting in to achieve basically, when we're talking about a government entity such as this, a kind of an academic result, which is this idea that we have to go to a hundred percent? But is that really necessary in the context of a state that is, you know, one of the fifty that comprises the United States?
Yes, Alderman, you are correct. We can continue to pay all of the benefits as they come due while being eighty percent funded. However, that's not good fiduciary practice. The standard that any actuary will tell you is that you want to be one hundred percent funded. And one of the reasons why you want to be one hundred percent funded is when you look at your own, the City of Nashua's financial statements, you have to pick up a proportion of the unfunded liability of NHRS on the face of your financial statements. And.
Well, that's true, but we can deal, we can deal with that. I mean, the, I mean, you're not asked, you know, okay, there's this theory put forth by the actuaries that we should be at a. we should be at 100%. Yes, but they don't have to pay the money, and they don't have to, it's an academic issue. That doesn't address the basic question I asked, which is, the only way this system would ever end, even if we stayed at 60% or 65, the only way that it would ever end is if the state went out of existence. I mean, and when that happens, it doesn't matter if it's 60% or 80 or 100, because none of the assets will be worth anything. So why is it so necessary in the context of a state, like, for the reasons that I've indicated, why is it so necessary to go to 100%? There'll always be, you'll always be able to pay the benefits as long as the country is still in existence.
Right. That is correct. However, I would point out to you that one of the things that makes a difference is that the more fully funded a pension fund is, the better it can withstand market downturns. We know they're inevitable. We've been, every few years, every 10 or 15 years, there's a major correction in the market. And the lower your funded ratio is when that financial event happens, the greater the hit to your funded ratio.
Well, yes, that's certainly the case. Now, I think you said that the return for the year ended this past June 30 was 26%?
26.8%. Yes, that's correct.
And did that have any, what impact did that have on the percentage funded? Did it drive that up, or what happened?
At this point, our actuaries are just beginning their work because our books are not yet closed for June 30th, because we're still awaiting the results of the investments of some of our alternative investments. And so those take a bit longer to come in. And so our actuaries are, right now, are working on assessing what additional liabilities were added during the past year and the valuation of the assets. Earlier, you asked what the contributions were that came in during the past year. There was a total of $722 million in contributions. Yes, this is less than the benefits that were paid, and as Marty said, we are in a negative cash flow position. But I would like you to know that this is very typical of what is referred to as a mature pension plan. That's why we have the assets to pay the benefits.
So just so I'm clear on this, so the 61% is as of June 30, 2020, as opposed to '21?
That is correct.
So you don't know yet what, whoever does this hasn't figured out yet what the percent funded is right now, given a very strong investment return for the last year?
That's correct. And I will remind you, as we said earlier, our actuaries look at the value of the assets over the past five years to average them, rather than just look at the number for one year. As you can see on Slide 19, the individual year's investment performance do vary a great deal. That's why they smooth them over time so that we can have a funded ratio that reflects the past as well as the current.
You know, the most painful thing that has happened the last few years, this one was now, and then that was four years ago, I think, is the reduction in the assumed rate of return, because that drives up the contributions without the employer seeing really any benefit from it, really. So now you're at 6.75%. I noticed that Maine is at the same amount. The small pension that Nashua runs, small compared to yours, for public works, like there are hundred-some employees now, but they're more beneficiaries, is actually 99% funded as of June 30, 2021. And I sort of thought, I forgot where I was going with that, but we are 99% funded. So we're happy about what has been achieved by these trustees of the Nashua Pension Fund. Anyway, I will try to think of a few more questions, but I'm sure others have them.
Alderman Dow.
You stated in your presentation that you're very conservative, and that's amicable. That's good as far as the pension plan's concerned. But two things bother me. One is, does the pension plan ever take into consideration, when they change the rules, the impact it's having on the cities and towns of Nashua, which may cause people to lose their jobs that are part of the pension plan? You know, you said in one year, you get 1% of $11 billion, right? Billion?
Yeah. $11 billion.
I mean, I have, I'm retired, and I have a retirement investment with a company, and I've never get below 7%, even in the down year. So I don't know how we make 1% with that amount of money. I certainly don't have $11 billion in my account. So that's one thing. The other thing is that I have a pension from a major company, and they ran about in the high 80s, mid to high 80s, all the time. And the end goal keeps getting moved out. Why are we so locked in on one certain year? Because that kills us as well. So there's several points that impact cities that I feel should be taken into account by the pension plan. But the one is, it's a state pension plan, and the state doesn't contribute anything anymore. I know that's a legislative thing, but to me, that's a slap on the cities and towns of the state of New Hampshire. They started the plan with a high percentage and went to zero. And I know you mentioned several times about mismanaging in Concord. So I can understand that. But A, the percentage of monies that the state pays for the pension plan should be changed. And I guess it just missed this past season. Also, it appears to me that the only reason you get to 100% funding is so you can close down the pension system. You pay everybody off and have a nice day, go another way. I don't see why anybody has to get to 100%. There's nothing that I can see that drives that. So I think the investments are too conservative, the state's not paying their share, and the implications of the percentages that we have to pay as a city and town, based on the fact that we're not making enough money in our investments, which seem to be far too conservative, even for a pension plan, are costing cities and towns significantly. And I think someone needs to look at that and change it. For instance, you just said you made 26% this past year. When is that going to be sent down to the city so we don't have to pay as much? Is that going to impact us in '22? Are we going to wait and see what happens in '23, and it's always way behind? You know, as Chair of Budget, I can tell you that that hugely impacts when we start looking at city spending. And quite frankly, if it hadn't been for the pension plan and something else, we probably wouldn't have had a tax increase this year in property taxes. It's all being driven from Concord, which I'm including in pension plan. So those are the questions I have. I have others, but I'll just go with that one.
I'd just like to add, another reason to get to 100% funding is that we no longer will have to pay off the unfunded liability at that time. And at that point, the total contributions for the employer and the members can be closer to the normal cost, which is significantly less than what they are now. The normal cost for the different plans is shown on Page 20.
I remembered what I was going to ask you, which is related to the assumed rate of return. Do you anticipate another reduction? I mean, at 6.75%, isn't that good enough? I mean, it seems to be what Maine is doing, it's close to what we're doing. I mean, do you really, do you anticipate a drop to 6 and 1/4, or do you think we can stay at 6 and 3/4?
That's hard to say. It depends on what happens. Our actuaries go through a very detailed process of assessing what they think our assumed rate of return is. The first thing that they do is they look at what are the expectations for inflation in the future. And once they do that, then they also look at what they think the different elements of our portfolio will earn. So they come up with a number for what percent return will U.S. stocks have, what percent will U.S. bonds have, international stocks, international bonds, real estate, private equity, and they come up with a weighted average that reflects our portfolio. And that's how they come up with 6.75%. So if there are changes in the expectations in the next few years over where inflation is going, or what the expected rates of return for different investments, if that changes, then the actuary will develop a recommendation for the board to consider. And the board members are fiduciaries, and they have to do what is the right thing for the pension plan and its members. That's their sole responsibility as fiduciaries. Did you want to add anything?
If I can sort of address somewhat Alderman Dow's question, and kind of loop back to the mayor's question as well about the 100% funding, and I think it's a very reasonable question to ask us, that, okay, we're going to be paying 15% of the city budget until 2039, and then we're going to be paying 2%. How is that make any sense? And that question did come up during the Decennial Commission back in 2017. That's where the layered amortization that I mentioned earlier in brief came into account. And what that is, is the commission looked at it from the perspective of, we're reaching, if we get to our 100% funding target, that's all steam ahead, the rates are going to be what the rates are going to bet there, then they're going to be extremely low going forward with, we reach that funding level. And they felt, well, what happens after 2039? What if we have another downturn? What if we are over 100% funded? The rates could become extremely low. So in the 10 years since 2007, when they put in the 30-year amortization, and 30 years seem like a long time to people, 30 years in the past, actuarily, this concept of layered amortization has come into favor, and a lot of states have done this, where you freeze your old liabilities, and you pay those off by a hard stop. And that's, they passed the layered amortization language in 2018. So the liability as of July 1st of 2017, which is 5 of the 6 billion, so it's not a small number, that's going to be paid off by 2039 under the current funding plan. But the additional billion in liabilities we've added since then, primarily due to the rate decrease, to the mayor's point, is going to be paid off in a 20-year layer between 2023 and 2043. So basically, we won't be 100% funded by 2039. We don't have to ever be 100% funded again unless the markets put us over the top. But this layered amortization sort of creates a future buffer so that the liabilities can't grow to the extent that they have, that you all are having to pay for in this moment in time. Taking 20-year layers of 2-year funding return increments going forward, and that includes gains. So this 2021 is going to probably be a gain that we'll be recognizing over 20 years as well, some of that 26.8%. So it has smoothed it out. It doesn't take away any of the short-term pain. I'm not saying that, but it is, it was a recognition by the commission and legislators, and our board supported the idea as well, that this is a way to get closer to 100% funded, but not having to have this holy grail of 100% on July 1st of '39, or June 30th of '39, I should say. So there is a little more wiggle room in that now, because future gains and losses are going to be spread out. We're only two years, this will be the fourth year since 2017. So it's not smoothing anything much out yet. Most of that debt is still being paid off on top of the existing debt. But the layered amortization, again, it's a very good circuit breaker to keep the liabilities and the funding from getting to where they were in the past. So if we can get into a 90-plus% funded, as Jim pointed out, it's a lot easier to withstand a market downturn in that case. We lost probably 8 to 10% of our funded ratio, and from the low 60s to the lower 50s back in 2009. State of Wisconsin, which is one of the sort of gold standard plans out there, they were 100% funded in '07. They went down to like '94, and they got back to full funding fairly quickly in the early 2010. So the closer you are to full funding, the easier it is to absorb those market swings.
Attorney Bolton?
Is it possible to do more layers and extend things out further? And what I mean is, you started, you had a $6 billion unfunded mandate, and you say, okay, in 30 years, we're going to take care of $5 billion of that, and then we're going to give ourselves another four years to deal with that last $1 billion. Could you have said, okay, in 30 years, we'll take care of the first half, $3 billion, and then over the next 10 years, we'll take care of the next $1 billion? And then 10 years further to take care of another billion, and then 10 years further, another billion? So it will take 60 years instead of 30 years, but it spreads it out further, you're always making progress, and you don't get these big hits and then dramatic drop-off at some point. Maybe at 60 years, you get a drop-off, but the drop-off is being gradual, and presumably the increases to municipalities would be more gradual than they are under the current plan. So would that work?
From the perspective of actuarial standards, and accounting standards, they promote this theory of generational equity, so that the debts that are accrued, the same generation of taxpayers is paying for it as, who were there at the time that the liabilities were accrued. And the standards are like 15 to 20 years is what they would consider a generation for the purpose of the funding liability. So it would be...
That's certainly not what's happening under the present plan.
Absolutely. You folks in New Hampshire are the poster child for what happens when there isn't generational equity, because honestly, anybody who bought a house 10 years ago, the person who was living there 20 years ago had a pretty sweet deal, and you're paying for it now. And we need to get away from that.
But stretching it out over time seems to be fair in other circumstances. But anyway, so it could be done, you're just saying it would deviate from the principle of generational equity.
The auditors may have an issue with this as well.
It seems like there's a willingness to deviate from that principle in the other direction. Thank you.
Alderman Dow?
Yes, I could be wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears to me like you're making your investment decisions on a very short-term basis because of a downturn in the market. But the other thing that happens over that period of time is spikes in the market. And if you look at the Standard and Poor's, the stock market over the last 40, 50 years, it's on a pretty even growth. I mean, there are spikes one way or the other, but it's growing. Same thing with the bond market. So why are you not using the average return, like 1% last year, 20% this year, 26% this year, somewhere in between? Because the numbers that you're using and the goals that you're shooting for... and the goals that you're shooting for are hurting cities and towns. And we can't take any more hits like we've had in the last four years. And I don't know if you have any plan, but, you know, I'm hoping that things are going to either stay the same or get better as far as the pension's concerned going forward.
Ms. Stalden, I can assure you that NHRS is a long-term investor. We have a very long-term horizon for our investments. And because we are a long-term investor rather than a short-term investor, we can invest in assets like real estate and private equity, which have a long-term horizon so that we can get the excess returns that those investments have. Stocks, which you are correct, they have done very well over time. But they have had, as you noted, significant peaks and valleys. That's why we are committed at NHRS to have a diversified portfolio so that when one type of investment doesn't do well, another type typically does so we can have good risk-adjusted returns over time.
But across the board, how can you with $11 billion come up with 1%? To me, your investment should be drawing far more than that. You can get 1% on a savings account. I mean, so why are we reflecting the 1% back on the cities and towns for that year? And why aren't we now saying, we got 20%, 6% in this past year, let's change what the cities and towns owe now because we've made a lot more money?
Well, this year's valuation will be part of the next rate-setting process. And so it will be included in that.
But not till '23?
Correct, because we set rates on a two-year basis.
That's one of the things that's hurting the city.
And do you adjust the assumed rate of return every two years or every four?
If it's going to change, it's part of an experience study, which would be every four years. So we're not going to look at that again short of, you know, major economic disruptions before '23, before fiscal '23. And the actuary would make recommendations in early '24 on any changes to assumptions they would recommend based on their study. But so I think Director Goodwin may kick me under the table, and the actuary certainly would. But the return that we had this year is very favorable for rates staying at least flat in the '24, '25 rate cycle compared to '22, '23. Whether they'll go down, we don't know because of other liabilities. But, you know, the goal of, is trying to have relatively stable rates, even if they're at a higher level than they had been in the past. And that, you didn't see that this year. You had a 20% increase. You know, so, you know, but this is good news. But one year doesn't make or break the pension system. And the 1.1% last year, that was lower than a lot of our peers, you know, which is not usually the case. But that's a June 30th of '20 number, you know, three months into the pandemic. And the economy and the markets really recovered in the second half of 2020. If you had a calendar-year 401(k) statement versus a June 30th, you know, you'd see those single digits, you know, with other plans. And, you know, one of the reasons why our assumed rate of return is where it is, and a lot of plans are, we're not, probably been at least a half a dozen, maybe 10, plans that have lowered it since last year, since we did, is fixed income, which is about 25% of our portfolio. Some plans, it's more, or it's less by a few points. But, you know, you're not getting any interest on, you know, bonds and fixed income anymore. You know, back in the 80s, you could have bonds paying 10%, 12%. And so you have this floor. And you can manage the volatility in the equity markets because you know you were making X from fixed income. And that's not the case anymore. And that's what's been driving rates down over the past decade for pension plans is, you know, the interest rates have just remained near the bottom.
So I wasn't quite sure of your answer on the, so you're saying that the 26% is going to be reflected in as far as our 2023 budget? So the amount we pay to the state's going to be less than we're paying in '22?
'24, '25.
The cities can't wait that long. You know, you shouldn't be doing it that far out. You know, it just, it ought to be looked at a lot closer because, you know, we can't, we shouldn't be paying millions of dollars that we're paying in '23 when you don't need it. I mean, you could say you need it because you're going to add to your 11 billion. But cities like Nashville, Manchester, Portsmouth, Dover, you know, there's a lot of things that can't be done in the city budget because we're covering for a low percentage rate that was estimated a year ago, or two years ago, instead of what you're getting on a return now. That, to me, seems very unfair.
Alderman Lopez?
So to Alderman Dowd's point, I'm getting the sense that we're the long-term investment. At some point, the state said, let's get all the municipalities on board. And then when we're not able to invest effectively, they'll carry it. And that's causing problems for Nashville particularly. And when we talk about generational equity, I'm sorry, Alderman Laws, but it looks like your daughter is going to be a voter before we actually manage to carry this 0% philosophy thing that we're looking at for a debt. This is causing real problems for Nashville citizens today. We have to look at how we're keeping fire stations open, whether we can keep schools open, what services we can offer, because there's that interest in getting to that 0% unfunded number. So my question is, who's determining that number? Is that the state legislature? And as a collective act of governance? Or are you determining that number? And is it, is there any transparency in terms of what you're investing in? Because there's some pretty big investment funds that are very long-term, and they do much better than what it seems like was happening, even with the 1% return. It's not a unique situation to New Hampshire's retirement fund. Everybody's investments recovered and we're able to report that. So what's different? And how does the average taxpayer look at how New Hampshire retirement invests and say, that's what I want to advocate for?
We have annual reports and quarterly reports sort of listing the managers by section, you know, with historical and quarterly returns. So the information's out there in our annual investment report. All the managers that we employ are listed. The Independent Investment Committee typically meets monthly and in public session to review the investments, interview new managers, make decisions on terminations, things like that. You know, its portfolio is consistent with, you know, most public sector investments. You know, in some ways, you know, we don't go into hedge funds or anything like that like some plans do. But everybody has a mix of, you know, real estate and equity.
And that 18 years of catch-up plan?
Yeah, the amortization through 2039 is statutory. So that's something that's in the law in terms of the investment decisions and the, you know, the determination of the assumed rate of investment returned to the board or the investment committee deals with that. So there's sort of a bifurcation on the funding versus investment.
The 100%? Is that, that's all in the amortization plan?
That's in the statute for amorti- yes, it is statutory. I mean, the details of the plan aren't, but the funding goal is, is right in the statute.
And is that a product of your office? Or is that a product of state legislation?
The state legislation. We, as a board, NHRS doesn't take sides on benefit increases or decreases or things like that. That's a settler function left to the plan sponsor, which is the state. So, you know, we'll run them numbers for proposals, but we typically don't advocate for or against outcomes unless they're, you know, really fiduciary-challenging to us or would be tax violations, things like that.
Right, and I think it's important to gauge your influence on this so that we can figure out who we should be talking about.
Alseth Alderman Lopez?
Yep, thank you.
Alderman Schmidt?
Thank you, Madam President. The reason I was really glad when I heard that you were going to be here today was I wanted to make it clear that what happens when we get a bill of 29 million? Property taxes go up. That's how we fund this. This last year, when you only made 1.1%, a lot of people here lost money. A lot of people here lost their jobs. There's people who can't pay their rent. This is hard on us. This is not the time for this to go up. And I'm very, very disappointed that there's this goal of 100%. When we're talking about people, when we're talking about them staying in their houses, that's the real issue that I see in this entire thing. I see how you're stuck because of what the legislature has done. And we should work on that. But we also have to understand that we're people at this point. And this is very, very important to us at this horseshoe. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie?
Thank you, Madam President. So I echo the mayor's comment that he doesn't want to shoot the messenger. We understand that you're the messengers. But I have several questions. One is, when you first started talking, you talked about how we were the second-largest participant in the retirement system. And I think I heard you say that Manchester is separate. Is Manchester not in the state retirement system?
City employees only have a separate plan in Manchester, much like your Public Works folks do in Nashville. But the teachers, police, and firework in Manchester are part of NHRS.
Okay. My second question is the, to Alderman Lopez's question, did this idea of the 100% funding, did you say that that's a decision that the legislature made? That you have nothing to say about that? Is that, is that correct?
It is a decision that the legislature made, sir. And speaking as fiduciaries, even though we're not board members, we are staff, and that does make us fiduciaries. It is the right thing for the plan to do, to become 100, to have a goal of being 100% funded.
Okay, so, you know, that may be ideal. But do you know what banks are required when banks lend out money and they have a liability to their borrowers? Do they have to hold 100% of those assets? Do you know?
No, banks are subject to different rules and regulations than pension funds are. It's because there are different types of enterprises.
Do you have any idea what percentage banks are required to hold?
I personally do not know.
I don't know either, but I suggest it's a lot less than 100%. I think the same is true of insurance companies. This idea of 100% being an ideal, I understand from what you're saying that the legislature has made this decision. But it does not seem, in spite of your saying that it's the right thing to do, I don't think anybody else does it. So I'm not sure how right a thing it is to do. And it's an easy decision to make for the legislature when, at the same time, the legislature has opted out of funding this at all. They've gone from 40, 35% to zero. So it's easy for them to say, you know, you ought to fund this at 100%, but we're not going to contribute anything. And, you know, I know it's not your decision, and I'm not trying to shoot the messenger. But it's, you know, it's hard for me, and I don't know if you can justify it, but it's hard for me to find a justification for this position. And I echo what my other fellow aldermen have said. This is really hurting not only Nashville, but all the cities and towns. And so, thank you.
Alderman Lou? Alderman Lou? Anyone else that has questions? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I really want to thank you folks and hope for coming down here. And I hope you don't really feel that you're in the middle of a lion's den, you know? And if you did, I apologize. But I think the other aldermen have really truly expressed their opinion. What are you going to do with it? I don't know. As a state representative as well, I appreciate the non-partisanship of the New Hampshire retirement system. You guys do not take sides to the political games that exist up there. You try to do your best to advise the legislature. And I'm under the impression at times, the real problem with the New Hampshire retirement system is 400 legislatures, you know, and it seems. Last year, I wrote a bill to put in just 15% or, excuse me, 5% to get back to the 35. Just 5%. It was defeated. Nashville is dealing with cities and towns up there that don't employ the amount of firefighters and police and teachers that we do. We have some schools, elementary schools, that's probably bigger than some SAUs in some communities. They might have a handful of teachers. We've got more than a handful in this town. So I don't know what message you can bring back. I've already banged my head against the wall up there at Concaut. I am proud of my fellow delegation that has gone up there. And I did have the support of that 5% trying to get it back into the pension system. But that 5% were to help the Nashville taxpayer. And that's what we're really talking about here. And these other people from the hinterlands of, you know, wherever they have cows and bonds and everything, you know, great for them. But we in the city have broad shoulders down here, and we're expected to put out fires and manage a police department and educate, you know, children that come from other communities and everything. So things are going good. But we would appreciate some support from Concaut, but we're not getting it. But I just hope in the future, and like I say, I'm very appreciative, you know, coming here like this. But in the future, I don't know what you can do. I mean, as a legislator, we will try more. But I've seen games. And I'll ask you just one final question, if I may. When you have a pension system, people, it's done by percentages. So if a police officer, a firefighter, a teacher, what they get paid, a percentage goes into the pension system. It's the same percentage in Canaan as it is in Nashville. What he withdraws is based upon that percentile that he puts into the system. So I heard on the legislative floor that it's what Nashville pays its employees. It has nothing to do with that if we follow the law of percentages. Am I correct?
Yes, the contributions are based on the salaries. And it's the same percent for each of the participants in the plan, whether it's Nashville or Portsmouth or any other city or town. It's the same percent.
And I thank you for that answer because a lot of our teachers that do yeoman work within our school system, the firefighters, the police officers that accept their duties and a lot of work, you know, realize that. And unfortunately, I think every state rep in the room has heard that before, echoed in the chamber up there. Oh, it's what you guys pay in Nashville. It has nothing to do with it. It's strictly the law of percentages. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, just two quick things. One, several people asked me if the state of New Hampshire has a lot of, I hate to use the term elderly because I've probably fallen in.
You have.
But, and- But, and, you know, I don't know how that's shifting. Are we getting younger or older? Which would affect the pension plan, particularly the people that are retiring? But the other question I have is, when you say 100% funded, that means that you have enough money in the plan that if every single person working today, retired today, you could pay them their pension? Is that correct?
Yes.
Companies don't, major companies, thousands of them, because I've looked at them, don't get to 100% because not everybody that they have is eligible for retirement for a long time. So there's a vast number of people in the retirement system that couldn't retire it if they wanted to. So to have the money to pay them for retirement to the major companies in the United States doesn't make sense. So why have that money? So why are states different in that they feel they need a dollar for every person that could possibly is in the system for retirement that can't retire until they reach 20 years? To me, that doesn't make sense either. And again, by the way, not here to shoot the messenger. We appreciate your being here. And we're just using you as a conduit to get some information back to Concaut.
I think this... Thank you for having us. It was very civil and a good conversation. And hopefully, we had some answers. I mean, I've been the answers you wanted to hear. But, you know, they're trying to give you some answers. But, you know, with the 100% funding, it is in the abstract. But it's, you know, there's not a magic day where you're 100% funded and you're 100% funded forever. You could be 100% funded one day and 95 or 102 the following day, depending on, you know, how the quarterly earnings report did, what it did to Wall Street. So, and when you talk about paying out the benefits, not all at once, but over the lifetime of all these generations of public employees. And you're talking about somebody who can enter the plan in their 20s or their 30s, work 20, 30, even 40 years, and then live another 20, 30, 40 years. And that's the horizon that you're looking at. And a lot can happen in 60 to 70 years, you know, in the world. So, you know, if you're not shooting to be fully funded, you're much more vulnerable to shocks and disruptions that it's going to cost more to fund the plan than if you were in a stronger financial position. So, you know, I think it's fair to say, you know, 100 is the goal. And we may not be there because of layered amortization and maybe always carrying a debt forward. But if you think of it, you know, as a, you know, a kink in a hose, you know, this is this balloon that unfortunately you folks are all dealing with in your budget right now. But getting through this pain and having the discipline to pay this back up to a better funded ratio will prevent it from happening again in the future. And, you know, hopefully, you know, there's certainly going to be a state in New Hampshire, as the mayor alluded to. And I certainly hope there's always going to be a Nashua. And that, you know, it's, you know, the town where my kids grew up that, you know, people are going to want to live here like they still do now, I believe.
So can you, by the way, can you tell me what percentage of the people that are in the state retirement plan are eligible to retire?
Not off the top of my head. Basically, if you reach the minimum age requirements to retire, you can retire. So folks who are older than 60 on the employee and teacher side, you know, can retire, you know, now if, you know, they're that old. And the police and fire, there's age-end service requirements for folks that range anywhere from age 45 with 20 years to age 52 and a half with 25 years for the newer hires. So, you know, there's always a pool, but we don't tend to look at that, you know, and have a handy stat for you. I could research that if you're interested, though.
So you also alluded to that you're going to have a year-end report very soon?
Yeah, those come out in December, the investment and the financial report. And so we get the numbers from the actuary usually around Halloween or early November. And then to finish the report. So the funded ratio and that information will be available.
So could we get copies when that's available?
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to give my two cents for whatever it's worth, probably worth a lot less in the retirement system. But so my feeling on this is that the, you know, the... I understand the goal of the 100% and getting there. I think it's a good... I actually agree with it to an extent. But the issue is, is that, and this is what Alderman Schmidt was referring to, and that is that you also have to live in reality. And the reality right now is that, you know, people are hurting still from the pandemic. The pandemic's still going on. You have a number of aldermen here participating from home, myself included, just to be overly cautious. You know, so you still have an economy that's recovering. And the biggest part of it, though, is, to me, the fact that the state doesn't contribute a dime to this system. So, you know, I think that, in my opinion, you know, we have a perfect storm that happened this year. And, you know, certainly, I can understand the argument that, you know, in theory, had the pension plan been fully funded, you know, that this wouldn't have been as drastic as a year or as tough for Nashua or other cities and towns because we would have had that higher funding source. But on the other hand, that's an artificial... That's an artificial thing that was created via statute. Because in all reality, the legislature could have decided to relax some of those burdens that came down to Nashua in a number of different ways. They could have, you know, not to overuse the phrase "kick the can down the road", but certainly, they could have, you know, at least delayed that 100% implementation to kind of give people who are living here in reality a break. And, you know, so I think it's incumbent upon the legislature and it's incumbent upon the people who are voting to understand who they're voting for and what they stand for. Because people's livelihoods and their taxes and things like that, you know, makes a difference. And so when you hear people, you know, that are putting these goals and they stick by them 100% no matter what, sometimes that's not the way to go. In my opinion, you want somebody in office who's going to be flexible. You want somebody who's going to understand that things change, and you need to be able to change with the times. So, you know, I think we have some good people from Nashua up there in that legislature. But kind of what Alderman O'Brien said, I think some of the people in the rest of the state, I don't think they understand the difficulties that some of us here in Nashua or in other cities are facing. So it's a little disappointing. But regardless, that's my two cents. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions, comments? Seeing none, Mr. Carlin and Ms. Goodwin, thank you so much for being here this evening. We really appreciate you taking the time to come down to Nashua and explain to us the pension system. So thank you very much for being here.
Thanks for having us.
And thank you for all the good questions.
Thank you. Unfinished business.
Motion to forward to the ballot the citizens' petition relative to a citizens' petition seeking to amend the city charter relative to the nomination and the confirmation of appointments to the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners.
Alderman Harry Gethrake.
Madam President, I motion to forward to the ballot of the citizens' petition relative to a citizens' petition seeking to amend the city charter relative to the nomination and the confirmation of appointments to the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners by roll call.
You've heard the motion, discussion on that motion. Alderman Dowd.
Just for clarification through Corporation Counsel, it's our, it's, I believe, the legal opinion of legal counsel. We have no option but to vote yes on this.
The Board of Aldermen is required to order it placed on the ballot.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. At the public hearing, former Alderman and County Commissioner Mike Susi made the assertion that the... that our city charter requires, I think it's 10% of registered voters. And he said that we didn't, that the petition did not have a sufficient amount of signatures and that, you know, basically, that we could not put this on the ballot. And I would, through you, I would like to ask Corporation Counsel whether he has a response to that. And can we be assured that we're doing the right thing by moving this forward?
Attorney Bolton.
I'll give you every assurance I can. The fact is, the legislature, which established the city charter and the special act regarding the police commission, to begin with, has more recently, pursuant to the Constitution and the amendment to the Constitution that was made in 1964 relative to city charters adopted locally, has passed RSA Chapter 49-B, which provides, as the Constitution authorizes, a way for municipalities to amend their charters. In our case, the city charter. And 49-B:5 specifically deals with the percentage and the percentage of what is needed for a citizens' petition to reach the ballot. And it's 15% of the total votes cast in the last municipal election. That is the current law. What was done decades ago in the past by a different legislature has been superseded. Our city clerk has gone through the signatures and has certified to you that that 15% threshold was reached. So I don't know what analysis that former police officer, former firefighter, former Alderman, County Commissioner Susi is using. I don't know where he got his legal education. But I do not understand at all where he comes up with the idea that he has.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you very much for that. It's probably, you know, just because, you know, when people look at our charter, you know, as it's listed in our online or, you know, in the charter itself, you know, says what he says it said. But, you know, as you point out, it has been amended, you know, by subsequent action by the legislature and perhaps even the Supreme Court has expressed an opinion about this. And it makes me think that, you know, in the future, if we're re-elected, maybe two years from now, at the next municipal election, we might consider asking the voters whether or not they would authorize a charter commission, you know, that could look at our present charter so that when people look at the charter, it would be nice for the charter to say, you know, what the current law is and not say something that's different or that has been amended by the legislature. You know, I know the legislature can always amend it. But at least, you know, we ought to have a charter that, when we look at it, as much as possible, states exactly what the law is and not, you know, mislead people about what it is or require that, you know, that they have to hire a lawyer to get an opinion about what it means. You know, I think our charter needs updating so that it says what it means and means what it says, you know, so that people can look at it and understand it. But, you know, thank you for making that clear. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
With respect, Alderman Jettie, I don't know if we need a charter commission on that. And we have the Facebook comments section. They can handle that for us.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I didn't understand you.
We have the Facebook comments section. That can handle it.
Good point. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you to Corporation Counsel, my question is hypothetically, what would happen if this motion failed?
You could all go to jail. I don't think that would happen. But theoretically, was how you prefaced your question, you're required by law to put this on the ballot.
So, may I continue?
Yes.
What happens if, you know, we don't... If we don't vote on it? I mean, it seems to me that, I guess I don't understand why it's taking an action of this board if it's just something that automatically has to happen.
Well, Alderman Clemmons, that's a good question for state representatives.
We only knew.
Because you had the public hearing that's required by law last week. And I will tell you that RSA 49-B:5, Roman numeral 5B, says, "Within seven days after the public hearing, the municipal officers..." And that term is defined. And in Nashua's case, it means the Board of Aldermen. "...the municipal officers shall file with the municipal clerk a report containing the proposed petition amendment and shall order the proposed amendment to be placed on the ballot at the next regular municipal election." So that's what the legislature has said. This board has to order it placed on the ballot. So why it isn't automatic, I don't know. But the legislature, in its great wisdom, required you to order it placed on the ballot.
You all said, Alderman Clemmons?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Due to my lack of bail money, I vote yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
All right, you have 10 yays and 1 nay.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the September 21st, 2021, special meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Tenza. Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
And Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
All right, you have 10 yays and 1 nay.
We are adjourned at 8:53 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for not calling my bluff.